The November 10, 2022 Planning Board Meeting is called to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Chair LaFaro.
President.
Vice Chair Finity is absent. Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So we'll take the applications in order. The first is Brown Development Corp. And do we have proper notice, counsel?
We do, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Who's reading this?
I am. Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, November 10, 2022, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the final application entitled Brown Development Corporation. The application consists of a two-lot subdivision of a 1.313 acre property located within the R-20 zoning district situated within the New York State archeologically sensitive area at 259 Major's Path, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-130-3-5.
Thanks, Tom. Yes.
Daphne Vaughn. Is this on? Surfside Environmental Planning. So as was mentioned, this is a two-lot subdivision on Major's Path on the west side of the road. It's approximately 250 feet north of Roman Road. There it is. So it's two lots. It will be a road fronting lot, which will be Lot 1, which is 22,619 square feet, fronting there on Major's Path. And then the second lot will be a flag lot in the west side there that will be 30,000 square feet in the bulk area. Both lots will be accessed from the south side with a common driveway. The structures that are on the property right now, there's a one-story cottage and there's a barn in the back there that were both feet demolished as part of the final map signature. They're both still there right now. We did have to get a variance on this from the zoning board for overall lot width, which we received for 93.62 feet of road frontage on Major's Path where 120 feet is required, and for the flagpole lot width of 19.03 where 20 feet is required. And that was granted in December of 2020 by the zoning board. We also received Health Department approval on this just this September, which is why we're so late here with this final application. We did have one extension on our pre-app report, which this board granted to us. Thank you. We've done an archeological study, which came back with nothing of significance. Per the pre-app requirements, we've also submitted the common driveway plans for engineering as part of the map. We've done some, most of the map revisions that were requested, I believe. And that's it. There are some encroachments. There's an encroachment from the commercial property to the south that is also proposed to be removed as part of this. And that's really the gist of the whole subdivision.
So the entrance is directly off Major's Path?
Yes. So both lots will take entry through the common driveway?
The common driveway?
Yes.
Anthony, could you put that aerial up one more time?
Sure.
So right now, the cottage takes entry from the north side of the parcel. So that will be extinguished, and they'll both take from the south.
What's the nature of the encroachments to the south? Just clearing?
It's that driveway there. I think it's part of their, it's a former oil company, I believe. And they've been in and out of court with the former owner. I believe the property was sold recently, within the past year. I think they're trying to remedy the situation with the new owner to tell them that we have to remove those encroachments. It's basically just concrete.
Yeah.
So we just want to make sure that they're aware that we have to remove this and, you know, that there's no issue when we do.
Right. And this is south of North Sea Meacocks?
Uh, yes. Yep.
Can you tell us what's across the street?
Uh, that's a nursery, I believe.
A functioning nursery? This is a current map?
Yeah, I don't know that. I think it might just be like a wholesale situation that there's.
On the east side.
On the east side.
Oh, here you mean?
Yeah.
So yeah, it looks like the county bought the development rights on this, so this is preserved land.
Uh-huh.
Preserve farm.
Yeah, we did send them ag, you know, the ag statement.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this application? Anybody on the board? Okay. Uh, entertain a notion, a motion to close the.
Do we need to check Zoom or no?
No, no, he said no one was on Zoom.
Oh, no one's on Zoom. Yeah.
There's no one on Zooms.
With a 10-day written comment period?
Motion. George, second by Gloria and all in favor.
Hi.
Posed abstention. Six in favor, one absent. Thank you, Daphne. The second application is Paulsonelli Management. And we have proper notice, counsel?
We do, Madam Chair.
We do. Okay. And who's reading this into the record?
I will read this one.
Okay.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, November 10, 2022, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan application entitled Paulsonelli Management. Said site plan application is for a total of 9.6 acres of land disturbance and clearing associated with establishing a flower farm with a total project area of 17.5969 acres located within the R-40 zoning district at 149 Old Country Road and 149 Jagger Paths beyond Gramsenburg, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-353-1-37.2 and 37.3.
Thank you. Is someone speaking to the application?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Your name, please.
My name is Danielle Paulsonelli. I'm here on behalf of Paulsonelli Management and East End Flower Farms. So we have proposed, we submitted an application to clear 9.6 acres of our family property to plant a commercial sunflower farm. We've gone through the pre-submission application and have taken the proper environmental precautions. And we plan on using the easement for Jagger Path as an entrance and exit. So we appreciate your consideration for our application.
Thanks. May, can we have the map up, though?
Uh, yes.
Please. And you've added the buffers that we requested?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board? No. Uh, there's, John Capabianca would like to speak. Please come up to the. Just give us your name and affiliation.
John Capabianca, 27 Hickory Bend in Spianca. I just had an opportunity to take a look at the site plan. I'm curious, I see that there's a 100-foot right buffer, I'm sorry. Will there be any, any type of fencing? And will it be placed at the property line or on the other side of the?
Just to, just to address your questions to us and then we'll get, we'll get the applicant.
Will there be a fence placed either on the property line or at the edge of the buffer?
Along which, which line? Just point to the.
East.
East.
You have 17, 16, 15, 16, and 17 on the east side.
Right.
And then it's a 100-foot buffer. So will there be a fence either at the property line or at the buffer?
There could be. Are you one of those lots?
I'm 17.
You're 17. Okay. Well, we'll, we'll get the answer from the applicant.
Okay.
Do you have a preference?
Oh, that's the question.
That's the question.
We typically, we typically put it on the, well, if we're delineating a buffer, we usually put it on the buffer line, split rail fence or something like that, not on the property line.
On the.
Right, when we delineate a buffer, don't we normally put it on the edge of the buffer line so that people don't encroach into it?
Yes.
There's a farm located on the north side with livestock fence, the eight-foot fence?
The deer fence. That's a deer fence. Yeah.
And so I'm curious what type of fence, if I could. Is a primary, primary access road through Jagger Path and iconic auto salvage?
Yes.
Is that the primary access road?
That's the primary access road.
Any secondary access road?
No.
And that's, other than sunflowers, do we have any other crops that might be planned either initially or going forward?
The application is for sunflowers, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So.
Yeah, the names under.
Oh, okay.
Probably didn't sign up.
Yes, I didn't have you on the list, so.
Yeah.
Don Larson.
I forgot to sign in. My name is Don Larson. I live at 147 C, Old Country Road. I'm an adjoining lot owner to the Paulsonelli property.
Okay.
Right here.
Okay.
Back when the property was cleared originally, I met the excavator out there. He indicated to me that he was going to be clearing all the way out to Old Country Road, which is a very busy road, lot of traffic, drainage problems, all kinds of issues. In my subsequent conversations with a previous analyst who reviewed this application, she had indicated that there was going to be a covenant restricting any further clearing without planning board approval. And I wondered if that was the case. I tried to reach out via email to get some of the conditions that might be put forth on this application and did not get any response. So I'm not sure if there is a restriction for future clearing or, she had indicated also about the possibility of putting a small, like scenic walkway along the westerly side of this for people to walk along the property. I wanted to voice my non-support of that since the town granted Mr. Shopman the eight-foot deer fence, the variance for the eight-foot deer fence. The deer run rampantly through there, and there is a deer run on that west side right here, and there's no way that anybody would want to walk on that. There's tons of deer, all kinds of ticks and everything like that. So I would hope that that's not a condition or is no longer a condition that had been put forth originally. So I had two questions. One was the, that access or walkway, and the second about a covenant restricting the access and clearing of that flag parcel, Old Country Road. The third thing I do want to say is that I support Mr. Paulsonelli's request. He's been before this town for 20-plus years, trying to get some things done way back when. He's been through a lot, and I support his application. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll try to get you some answers.
As I recall, Board Member Fulham?
Yeah, I'm going to have the applicant.
Okay. Can you address those two, couple of questions?
Yeah.
Not to come up.
Come up to the podium. So the first one is the walkway? Was there going to be a walkway proposed?
Well, I think Jackie Pryor mentioned about a walkway, but that was.
But it's not in the talks.
Not in the talks.
I thought in our last conversation, we discussed, I believe it was Board Member Fulham, discussed that as leaving it as is for wildlife.
Yeah, the site plan you have up is not the final site plan.
Yeah, I was going to say it's altered.
That shows a 25-foot buffer to the north.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
That is, this is the site plan that's before you.
But we did discuss a wildlife corridor, right?
Yes, that's a wildlife corridor.
Yeah.
So that's, so the wildlife can come down off the road, make a left turn, but then the buffer go up that way. So you don't have anything on the site plan. It's revised.
And is there a covenant for no access on that as well?
Well, there's a covenant on the, on the, on the buffers that we, that Claire mentioned that'd be part of the covenant, the buffers.
Yeah.
But we never really talked about this because we're not clearing that. We're not, it's not part of the site plan. The 9.6 acres isn't here.
Is the interior.
Right, and the 17 acres is the whole site. So we're not looking to go up there because we have the, the buffer through this area as well, so that's.
And that's the only entrance in through the?
The only entrance is through the Jagger Path or the iconic.
Right.
Okay.
So any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, then we'll close the hearing with a 10-day written comment period. Motion.
Motion.
By Craig, seconded by Gloria and all in favor. Posed abstention. Six in favor, one absent. Thank you. Application number three is Shinnecock Shores. It's a pre-submission conference. Do we have notice, counsel?
We do.
We do.
Albre.
Yeah.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, November 10, 2022, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission conference application entitled Shinnecock Shores Management Building. The subject site plan application proposes to construct a 2,298 square foot, two-story management building accessory to the existing community HOA facility. A 1.5 acre parcel located in the R-20 zoning district at 11 Shinnecock Road, East Quark, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-363-2-42.
That's it?
Right.
I'm Joe Lombardi from the Reina Group. We represent Shinnecock Shores Homeowners Association in this matter. Shinnecock Shores Homeowners Association serves a community of 264 lots, of which 262 are developed with single-family homes. COVID has transformed a one-time summer community into a more year-round community, which has increased the need for maintenance. The Shinnecock Shores is a completely private community that was established in 1954. The HOA is responsible for the maintenance of roads, including snow removal and even road striping. The HOA also maintains landscaping throughout the community and maintains a small beach area that's owned by the community. Many of the lots have, are on dug lagoons that provide access to Shinnecock Bay. The HOA is responsible for maintaining these lagoons. As one can imagine, there's a great need to store documents associated with a homeowners' association that's been in existence for almost 70 years. Right now, documents are stored in two separate places, so the HOA is paying for storage fees. It's one of the reasons the second floor of this maintenance building will be strictly for storage. Another reason for the maintenance building is to provide storage for vehicles and equipment. So the HOA does do snow plowing and maintains its roads. So it would, you know, it's, right now, there's a 10 by 36-foot, basically a shed, that was built by volunteers back when the HOA was formed 70 years ago, and it's showing its age. It does not have a floor, and it's, it's not adequate for the storage of vehicles. The HOA has one full-time and three part-time employees. The maintenance building will provide an office, a bathroom, a small kitchenette for the employees to take breaks. Especially important in the winter, if snow plowing is required, their insurance requires that there are two people in the truck. So, you know, to be able to have a place where you can go inside, have a cup of coffee, take a break, and then get back out on the road is important. There'll also be a small conference room in, on the first floor of the building. Right now, the HOA meets sometimes in one of the board members' homes, but more often than not, they meet off-site. And it would be much more convenient to have a room where they can meet on a regular basis and also have access to the documents that they may need at that time. Let's see, the, the maintenance building is located on a 1.5 acre HOA parcel. It's located on the northerly side of Shinnecock Road. This parcel contains a small playground area and also an area that's used for a sports field by the children in the community. The proposed building is on the opposite side of the property from the playground. Building will be served by public water, and sanitary waste will be handled by using an IA system. Stormwater runoff from impervious surfaces will be collected and piped to leaching pools.
So Joe, this is property, this 1.5 acres is owned by the association?
That's correct.
Okay.
And where are the houses in relation to this property?
This is on the north side of Shinnecock Road, and you can see that whole entire area.
This one, Joe?
Yes, that's it.
All right. 264 lots.
Yeah.
How big are the lots?
Um, I think about a quarter to a half an acre.
Okay.
It's an R-20, right?
Yep, and it's R-20. So you have an office, a bathroom, kitchenette, conference room for the HOH, all within this two-story building?
It's a two-story building. Yeah.
Paperwork storage on the second floor.
And what is it going to look like? Is it a?
How funny is that?
Is it a shingle?
Uh, yes, it would be a shingle building. We did provide some elevations, but kind of like a nautical, beachy-type building with weather gray.
Not a metal structure.
No, no.
This material, Joe?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yeah, that's it. That's what we patterned it after.
Mm-hmm. Nice.
You're going to have that tower?
Um, it's going to have a small version of that, but not.
Yes, yeah.
I'm a Kupola fan.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Let me just call the public.
Okay.
Carol and Harold Olson.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Carol Olson, and I live at 28 Marlin Road in Shinnecock Shores, which is in East Quark. I'm here to ask you some questions because this, even after living here first with my parents from 1958, I've never been to a planning board meeting, so it's nice to meet you all. And as I said, I don't know anything. Consider me a first grader. And one question I was going to ask is, how long is this application good for? If you pass it? I have a, I'm assuming that's what you do.
Application's good for two years?
Or don't do.
They have technically two years to secure their.
Two, two years to secure permits and what they need.
Oh, so in other words, if, if this is, what is it that you do? You pass something or you say, okay?
We look at the site plan.
Right.
And make sure that all of the site plan requirements from the town code are in place.
Right.
And that includes infrastructure, architecture, use, parking. So that's all reviewed during this period of time? And if it complies, then it's?
Then it's okay.
Passed.
Then it's okay.
We're in a pre-application, though.
But we're a pre-application, so it's early, early stages.
Okay. And my other question would be, if the community, because this would have to come up in, in front of the whole community, if the community decides that they want a different kind of building, or a smaller building, or a larger building, or what have you, does the community come back to you with a different idea?
If it's going to, that's a, it's something between the homeowners' association and the community members. If you're changing the site plan in any way, then you would come back to the board and ask for an amended site plan.
So that's the footprint of, here's the one-acre lot, and here's where.
This is the footprint.
That's what's proposed, yeah.
But if, say they want one story instead of two stories.
I guess that's between the homeowners' association.
And the members.
And the mem, yeah, and the members.
Well, and the building department, right? They have to.
No, they, no, they would have to come to an agreement.
They have to get a building permit.
After they agree.
They have to come to an agreement about what they want.
The community has to come to an agreement.
And then it's applied for. So I'm just assuming that this went through the various stages of the HOH approval. I don't know that, Joe. We'll ask you that.
They operate by virtue of bylaws. So in conformance with those bylaws, we would presume that's what brought the applicant here.
I know you can't presume anything.
Well, you can't assume. I don't know about presum.
Okay, so.
And so you know that there's an additional public hearing as well after, after we have a formal application, right?
No, the formal application is for what? The, the building itself?
Yes.
Yes.
The, this two-story, one bathroom?
Right.
This is more conceptual right now.
Right now, it's conceptual.
So they could get feedback from this board about how they will likely look at this project should they continue on. So maybe they wanted to do that, and I don't know if they went to the homeowners, people or not, but maybe they wanted to do that before going there so they got a sense of what was okay with the board before they presented it. I don't know. You'd have to speak to them.
Because it's very expensive to assemble all of the components that we require for a site plan approval. Sometime, you know, you need engineers and everything involved to a larger degree, which is more expensive.
And the gentleman that was up here before, what does his company do?
Joe Lombardi.
Why don't you speak to that, Joe?
We'll have Joe Lombardi come up. Joe, can you come up and just?
Shake your head.
They're engineers.
Hi, Joe.
Hi.
I'm Carol Olson.
Nice to meet you. We do engineer, the Reina Group does engineering and surveying.
Engineering and surveying. So you surveyed the property?
We've surveyed the property, and we prepared the site plan.
And you did that on behalf of who, Joe?
The HOA, the homeowners' association.
So the homeowners' association reached out to you. Question, of course, is did the HOH reach out to you guys, people who live there? Yeah.
Well, people on my block have been asking me. They saw the sign that was up on the, on the property, and they said, because as I said, I came here when I was a kid with my parents in 1958 in this same development.
Same development.
And I've lived in three different houses.
Great.
In the development during the years. So if there's an old question, they, they say, you know, Carol, do you know the answer?
So now, so I'm glad you came.
That's it.
Because people, most people don't understand the process, the planning process, and what we do and what you do, so that's great.
Yeah.
So you understand it a little bit better?
It helps.
Yeah.
It helps. Anything that you say helps. So if anybody else wants to say something, say it now. Help me out.
Now you have to tell your 400 neighbors everything that went on here today.
264.
Well, and I belong to, I'm sorry, guys.
And I was just going to say, this is the very beginning of the process.
This is the very beginning of the process.
And generally, as, as Kate was saying, an applicant will come to the board and say, here's kind of what we're thinking.
Right.
Do you agree with this? Does this make sense? Before they start spending a lot of time and effort and money finalizing plans.
Okay, but as I said before, if the community decides that this isn't what they want, that, you know, that picture that you showed with the tower or something, then, then the homeowners' association would be obligated to come back?
Well, you would, you would, you should communicate with the homeowners' association. Well, you would, you would, you would, should communicate with the homeowners' association, because that's your relationship with them, they're the ones who contracted with Lombardi Group to do it.
Is Joe, is Joe Lombardi Group, I thought you said?
It's Reina Group, it's Joe Lombardi, though.
For all those seniors, it's a Lombardi.
Are you a member of the board of the HOA?
Yes.
Okay, so, how does your board function, will they, I belong to an HOA also, and I'm not on the board, but I attend the meetings, and they would have presented, uh, you know, we'd like to hire Mr. Lombardi for X amount of dollars to start vetting the process for this project, and then you're gonna pay him for that, but when it's time to actually submit this application, he's gonna have to do a lot more work, and his bill's gonna get bigger, and that homeowners' association would probably have to authorize a lot of other contracts associated with that, so.
And you always have to be concerned with the money.
Sure.
You know, you look at the budget.
That's why this beginning process is so important, because he can get our opinion, hey, what do you think, versus going through the whole process of everything, the site plan submission, spend a lot of money.
Yeah.
And then say, what were you thinking?
But it's also, let me just intercede, it's a public hearing.
Yeah.
So we're here to hear your comments, that's important.
When we drove through, we had a flashlight, and I shined it on the, on the list, and because I didn't, wasn't really sure where this meeting would be, and it, although it did say Town Hall, it didn't have an address on it, so maybe you can make the next ones, you know, have an address on it.
Good point.
So that the public, uh, you know, will, you know, will actually know.
Well.
You've helped me out.
Great, thank you.
And, uh, I'm glad you're here.
So we'll see you at the next one, right?
We'll see you at the next meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Jackson?
Yeah, nothing.
Nothing?
I'll defer to.
Skip Heaney?
They're both good speakers.
We know.
We know.
Good evening, everyone, boy, it's a long time since I've been on either side of that table.
It's the same room, Skip, it hasn't changed.
Yeah, so, uh, we are a community, I won't go over everything, I'm sure I would be retracing Joe's steps, but we are a community in transition, more and more, especially since pandemic, our community that would be largely, maybe as much as eighty percent vacant throughout the winter months, is a hu, almost a hundred percent occupied year-round.
It's happening everywhere.
Yeah, and, and you can see the impacts just on, on the streets any day with the number of kids that are riding bikes or going to the high school or the local grammar school, and our organization, the HOA of which Carol is a member of, my board of directors, I am currently serving as the president of the HOA, I didn't ask for it, a very capable man who was the president, dearly loved the community, passed away, and I wound up being conscripted, more or less, would be very happy if there were he standing here. We are a community where so many functions, uh, of the HOA are in disparate locations, and because we are becoming a year-round community, we need to think very seriously about bringing all of these functions into one place so that we can operate properly. I mean, we have a, a business office that's, it's in the bedroom of someone's house.
Yeah.
And, you know, their generosity of spirit is only gonna last as long as they're with us, and they're aging, both approaching eighty years of age. We have one full-time, part-time worker who takes care of day-to-day maintenance as a vehicle, and we have, currently, we have three part-time people, serve mostly in the wintertime, where we have to have two people on a pickup truck with a snow plow, running up and down our private roads to keep the roads open and safe and for people. We have storage here in the village for archival records that go back maybe fifty-plus years. We have reportable records and documents that are stored elsewhere in Hampton Bays, and I can go on and on about the little pieces, uh, bits and pieces of our management function that really need to be brought together. Several years ago, we did conduct a survey within the community to get feedback from our members about what they would like to see here or there, playgrounds, beaches, roads, and, and, and a, a building, a multi-purpose building was one of the items in the survey, and it was really quite overwhelmingly supported, it wasn't even a matter of, well, you better go back and retest this, it was strongly supported. I, I know that in a prior decade, the HOA attempted to move forward with a, a broader concept of a, a community center, if you will, and for a host of reasons, I'm sure that also included cost, abandoned that notion. This is a much more practical application, we need to get our vehicles under roof, we need to get our equipment under roof, we need to be able to take our management office and our storage functions and make them readily available in the same place, and that's what this is about, this is about making our HOA more effective, more efficient, and it's a much down-scaled concept, that sketch up there, that photo, that came about because we needed a starting point for the conversation. We don't anticipate that it would look like that, we don't know what it will look about like, this is about us reaching out to the town and saying, we want to begin a conversation, we know we need to move in this direction, we don't know what the final form will take, we haven't done cost analysis beyond this step because we don't know what we want, and you can be assured, as any member of my board would be assured, that we will take whatever concepts that come forward, win those down to several that we can get consensus about on the board, and then we will have special meetings ourselves, informational meetings with our full membership, and out of that will flow the idea for a formal application, and that's when we'll begin to look seriously at the in-depth, and in-depth at the total cost, but this is about just saying, can we do something in this area here, and can we get feedback from you, that's why we're here tonight, thank you.
Good, thank you, Skip, good to see you. Okay, well, you know, understand the process, this is a pre-submission hearing, so we'll keep it open for thirty days for written comments, so you could come back or send the comments in to the town board, to the planning department, um, about, yes?
Could you give me an idea of, of what a written comment is?
Well, uh, you support the project, you don't support the project, if you like it where it's located, you don't like it where it's located, you think the architecture needs to be changed or kept the way it is, all of those items, just like that. So, uh, to keep this open, it's a pre-submission, so it's thirty-day written comment period?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, six in favor, one absent, thank you very much for coming, and good to see you, Skip.
Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Skip, good to see you.
Thank you.
You too. You ever changed?
I'm still vertical.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by George, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, six in favor, one absent, we are adjourned.